The town of Plainville, established in 1721 at the geographical center of Connecticut.
Okay, we'll get started. Today is Thursday, April 9th, 2020, 6:30 PM. The purpose of the meeting is to continue our budget work session discussions. Once again, for the benefit of those who are listening before you speak, if you could please just state your name so those that are listening will know who is the speaker. I appreciate that. This afternoon, Robert sent out some additional information regarding the capital improvements and I'm going to ask him to go over those. And if we could display them, that would probably be helpful for those that are watching on YouTube as well. So, Robert, if you could do that, please.
Yes, Kevin, could you put that up on the screen? And just for those who may be listening but not seeing us, if you need the link for the YouTube, just go to the town webpage and click on it and it'll come up on your computer screen. Kevin, you have that first slide by any chance?
I do, just one second. Thank you.
The first slide you're going to see is the fiscal year 21 capital improvement budget. And I put adjusted there because you may recall that I had suggested that we reduce, in order to get the, reduce the tax rate down. I had recommended earlier in previous meetings that we consider reducing the contribution to capital projects in the town budget from 800,000 to 700,000. So you will see that the, on the left side, we have in blue is the budget request for the town at 1,282,600 and the Board of Education is just 617,400 for a total of 1.9 million dollars. The general fund contribution is again 700,000, assuming that the council was accepting the, you know, the $100,000 reduction. The unassigned fund balance went from 900,000 to a million dollars and the debt management fund at 200,000. So that's how we currently stand, I believe, with, you know, how we would fund the capital improvement budget as it stands right now. Does anybody have any questions about the first slide?
All set.
Okay, the second slide is in conversations with school administration, specifically Steve LaPage and Sam Adlerstein. He is recommending some reduction in their capital improvement request. You may recall that Steve had indicated that he expects some realized savings in the current year's Board of Education budget. In speaking to Steve, rather than apply that savings against the bus contract for next year, prepay the bus contract for next year, which would be in the operating budget, we're both recommending that the town council consider using that 200,000 to offset their capital improvement request for next year. So prepay some capital improvement items and, you know, as a starting point, rather than doing it in the operating budget. So with that in mind, I'd like to turn the microphone over to Steve to go over this. The Board of Education anticipated COVID-related savings that would pre-purchase for the CIP. And then he also has reviewed the rest of his CIP request, the Board of Education's CIP request. And is, I believe, I know the Board of Ed met earlier this evening. And there may be some Board of Education capital improvement reductions as well, which would also lower the capital improvement request for next year as well. So I'd like to turn it over to Steve to at least go through the, this particular, at least the beginning portion of this slide.
Thank you, Robert. Can everyone hear me okay? Okay. All right, thank you. So yes, I did meet with the Board of Education or at least six of the members were able to join this evening. Just to review some of the preliminary thoughts and discussion, you know, following the meeting on Tuesday, I promised I'd go back with my team and look at our capital plan and also look at, you know, whatever we, whatever knowns we have regarding potential COVID-related savings that monies we may not expend this year and how they might best be applied going forward. I do want to say that during my meeting with the Board of Education members, there was, there was some concern and not 100% agreement on all of this that's being proposed. And I know I shared it with Robert earlier and I believe he shared it with you. But, you know, we, I guess what I'd like, the point I would like to make is that this is, this is a plan that we're putting in place, knowing that there are concerns, significant concerns and some related expenses going into next year that were not anticipated in my operating budget that hasn't been approved by the town council yet. Those are not factored into the operating budget. So this is the best plan. This is kind of the best thing that we can possibly, in my opinion, based on what we know now, put forward to help get us to the point that I think, you know, many of the town council members were looking at a zero increase in mill and taxes related to that. So I just want to go through the items here and just knowing that, you know, the concern is that a reduction here and a reduction in the operating budget would be devastating to the Board of Education. So I'm trying to put everything I can into this, into mitigating to get to the zero. As I believe there's a, there is an appetite for on the town council. So I'll go through the numbers. With that said, so in looking at our projections and looking at the capital budget, I believe the latest number that Robert had put forward was 617,400. Our original proposed budget from Board of Ed approved budget, I should say, was 684,400. After discussions with Robert, we had reduced that based on some work that we believe could be done internally with our existing staff and resources. So Robert already reduced it from 684 to 617 for. Using some of the realized savings that we're anticipating, again, there are many unknowns at this point, but we're fairly comfortable with the numbers that we have here to pre-purchase the student Chromebooks, which are in the capital plan for 135,000, to pre-purchase 65,000 of the staff technology devices, mostly laptops in this case. And I'll explain that in a minute. Actually entirely laptops, but it's under the Chromebook and laptop line. And then paying for the Makerspace STEAM hardware, which is for the three elementary school labs, iPads and other devices to support their Makerspace labs at each of the elementary schools. That was part of the capital plan that was approved and that was in the town manager's plan. So by, by prepaying for all of those, it would be a reduction by 224,000. However, one of the items that we are really concerned about and it was taken out of the original capital plan was 20,000 for the entrance canopy. It's, it's really in bad shape. It's chipping and falling, falling apart. It's, it's really in bad shape. So we were hoping to put that back in, use into the capital plan. But what the net of all of those changes would be, would be 204,000 decrease in the capital plan as presented by the town manager. Going down further at the Board of Ed reductions. On top of that, I met with Steve Bustle and Kevin Ross and Sam and David on Wednesday morning following the town council meeting. We looked at, we looked carefully, obviously, at everything. But looking at what we could put off perhaps for another year, I want to thank Steve Bustle. You know, there are, there are some risks involved to putting off the repointing of the brick, part of the 54 section of the high school building. We've talked about getting that done for a number of years and it continues to be put off. You know, so there's, there's some water seepage that gets through in areas that have repointing needs. And, you know, as you can see on the municipal building, like the bricks start to chip off a little bit. And so that's going to have to be done at some point, but Steve felt okay with putting that off for another year. That's 50,000 reduction in postponement, I should say. In addition, Kevin Ross is creative as, more creative than any technology director for any town I know. He thought creatively and 28,000 of the line that was 128,000 for staff Chromebooks and laptops, 28,000 can be removed because what he said he could do is take the teacher laptops from the high school that are all being replaced next year. They're six years old. And he can, he can modify those for the needs of the paraprofessionals and tutors who the Chromebooks were going to be purchased for. So instead of buying 28,000 worth of Chromebooks for staff, we'll get another year of life for minimal, minimal purposes. They use it for monitoring and tracking student behaviors, checking emails, things of that nature that are less sophisticated than what our teachers need. And that would save 28,000. They'll need to be purchased in the future and the, likely in the following year. I can't see getting more than a year of those laptops. But, you know, we'll obviously assess that next year when building our budget. And then finally, reducing the Makerspace STEAM hardware. And following up on questions from, I believe, Chairperson Puglisi, when we talked about the Makerspace and STEAM hardware, that did involve the 24,000 of Makerspace software and STEAM hardware items that for the three elementary schools that are noted at the top of this page. It also included some theater technology upgrades to the middle school theater, which have been tremendous. Todd was able to get some really good pricing and did some things cheaper. And therefore, the remaining needs are only 10,250, not 19,375, I think it was. So we were able to remove 9,150 completely out of the capital plan budget going forward. So that's just a reduction. That's not a postponement. So that reduces the budget off the top by 87,150. When you combine that with the pre-purchasing of technology and hopefully, pre-purchasing with all the realized savings that we're hoping to have this year, that totals a reduction on the Board of Ed side of the capital plan by 291,150. Any questions on all those details?
Madam Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
Jesse Nazzo, Mr. LaPage, just a question regarding the repointing of the 1954 section. Unfortunately, I come from a family of stone masons and I know the value of repointing brickwork. Tell me, what's, what's the danger there? Are you getting, is it deteriorating faster now because of kicking this can down the road so many times in the past? Tell me about what's going on with the repointing of that section, a little more if you would.
Yeah, I, I don't have all the details regarding. The only things I know, I trust Steve Bustle completely. And he said that we can get one more year before we start to do that. You know, the risks that we take are some water seepage through the mortar, you know, so that results in some, some water getting into the school. I don't believe that's widespread at this point. It's, it's in spots and they've kind of spot addressed those, those issues in the past. You know, the bricks aren't, you know, chipping and falling off the wall or anything to that, to that extent. I know you see some of that on the way into the municipal building and it's pretty unsightly. But I, I haven't noticed that myself and just talking with Steve, he said if we're, if we need to put something off, that, that could be something that we could, we should be okay for another year. Everything, every, every, you know, every change that we make, you know, everything was put in there for a reason and it needs to get done, but.
No, I understand. I guess my concern with something like that is a small thing can quickly snowball into a large thing. And that's why I was trying to get a better understanding of what the exact condition is now and what one more year of water seepage, rain, snow, wind-driven rain, things like that mean to that portion of the building.
Right. I would say that Steve's usually pretty direct with me when something is, is a pressing matter that he, if it can't wait, he's going to let me know. If you're taking a chance, he's going to let me know. And if, if it's, if it's a nice-to-have item that can wait, he'd let me know. I would say this is a, this is a matter that needs to be done and needs to be done soon, but he thinks another year would be okay.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I would point out that the repointing is actually a multi-year project, that the 50,000 wouldn't do all of the 54 wing. It just starts to do it. And I think he had some.
Three years.
Three years of doing it, so.
Are we doing it in three, three years of 50,000 a year?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so what's a three-year project is now essentially become a four-year project?
Oh, I think we put in originally two years ago, so I think we're.
About a six or seven-year project by the time we actually get it done, assuming if we can get it done next year. All right. Thank you very much. I appreciate the input.
Of course. Any other questions at all I could help to address or?
This is Kathy speaking. No questions from me. I appreciate you going through this exercise so that we can get a, you know, potential plan going in place so that we can hopefully make some decisions that'll work out in the long run for everybody. We understand that anything that's changed is always a risk. But your explanations, I think, are reasonable. And I, and again, I appreciate you going through this to give it to us tonight.
You're welcome.
In order to, if there's no other questions, in order to achieve a zero-mill increase through the capital improvement budget, we would need to make additional reductions of a little bit over 100,000. If we were to do that, the way I would recommend it be funded would be actually on the third page. So Kevin, if you could put up the third slide. The third slide shows that our original way we were going to pay for the CIP, and that was on the first slide, was, you know, general fund contribution of 700,000. It was 800, but it put the seven with the, with the, you know, the original adjustments. The unassigned fund balance of 1 million and a debt management fund contribution of 200,000. The recommendation, if we were to find another 100,000 worth of reductions, would mean that the proposed general fund contribution would be reduced by the 391,682 that we need to get to a zero-mill increase. So that, so that would bring the general fund contribution down to 308318, keeping the unassigned fund balance at 1 million and keeping the debt management at 200,000. So, you know, and we had given you the list of, you know, and I know you had it in your binders, but we gave you individual sheets the other day that shows you the projects that are left in the, in the CIP to be considered by the council. So certainly you can reduce that even, even more than 100,000 that's needed. But all things being equal, you know, that's what it would take to get to zero at this point in time if you choose to use 1 million in unassigned fund balance and 200,000 on the debt management fund. Is there any questions?
Robert, I have a question. Go ahead, Mr. Nazzo.
Are you sure? Thank you very much. Robert, I apologize. The other night, and I can't find it now in my email, we had a slide that showed us if we were going to fund half of a police officer. The number was somewhere around 401,000. Am I remembering that incorrectly?
Yes, and then we subtracted 10,000 for the.
From the library. Electrical line. Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Thank you. This is Kathy Puglisi speaking. Robert, I have a question. Maybe Rob can help us with. I don't know if he's there tonight. But regarding our capital fund, do we have any reserves in the capital unexpended dollars that had been previously allocated but have not been spent to this date?
Yes, this is Rob Boudin. We have 2,700.
That's close.
Yeah, we, over the last, you know, probably 10 years, what we've budgeted is what we've spent, plus or minus a little bit. We don't budget anything extra. No extra money's been put into the fund. So the project cost from what we budget is usually what the projects come in at. So we have very little capital reserve fund, fund balance to use. Everything has to come out of the general fund.
Thank you. So in order to, for us to, we have to come up with 100 and something thousand dollars right now, Robert, to get to our, our target?
Yes, 100,532.
I'd like to propose for discussion purposes that we reduce the sidewalk program by 50,000, leaving 150,000. I do believe that the sidewalks have been pretty much ignored over the past many decades. I don't want, I understand what we're trying to do here and everybody is cooperating in giving in a little bit. But I do need, I do believe we need to start doing something with those sidewalks, just as we do with all other parts of our town. So I would suggest that we reduce the sidewalks by 50,000. The other 50,000, I would like to ask the council if they have some thinking as to where we may be able to take care of that.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
Deborah Tompkins. I was wondering about 50,000 from the police computers?
Okay. I don't, I, I don't know what impact that would have in terms of the plan that, that's being put in place, but that's certainly a place we can look at. I don't know if there will be extra monies left over at some point to transfer in there. Is there any possibility that some of those monies can come from data processing department upgrades in equipment? Is there any dollars in that account that could be helped to transfer over to the police computer project?
I don't believe there is. The shared services, shared services storage is, has to do with some of our servers that have to be upgraded along, you know, and the Board of Education has some monies in there. The fiber installs of paying back, the water push control budget that, that we funded, you know, over several years to pay back that, you know, to, to, you know, bar from the water push control. I mean, we could, we could, we could push that back a year if you, if you choose to do that. So I guess, you know, we do have to pay back the water push control fund. We could delay that a year if you, you know, maybe that's where the 50,000 could come from.
Robert, I was also wondering about the 30,000 item for upgrades and equipment aggregate. Is there any money in there we could use?
Well, we have, we have computer replacements that have to be done. I know that there's several departments that, you know, are on their last legs and all that. So I wouldn't recommend doing that.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Rosemary.
Rosemary Moranti. You know, I had brought this up, I think, one of our previous meetings as well, that in the municipal building maintenance budget, we had talked at some point in our earlier discussions about reducing the electrical by 10,000 based on the most recent estimates. And I, you know, I think it's not a lot of money, but I think it's something that we could consider. I also want to mention, I did have some concern and I know this is certainly after the fact. But following the conclusion of our meeting on Tuesday night, I went back to my notes on the library budget page. And you know how we had reduced the budget by 10,000 based on the rationale of the electricity? Actually, the amount we had discussed was 5,000 back on March 10. And I was somewhat concerned about that, especially because I don't know what the impact on the economy is going to be on part of their revenue side. They have a number of different funds. And honestly, I don't know if it can have some impact or not, but I just thought I would mention it. I know that it's somewhat after the fact. We did vote on it. But I thought it was worth mentioning and also, of course, worth mentioning the 10,000 that I think we can reduce for the municipal.
Thank you for that, Rosemary. Any other thoughts on some of these ideas that have been offered?
Madam Chair?
Mr. Wazorko.
Yes, this is Christopher Wazorko. What I'd like to do is look to, I would actually take the entire 100,000 and change right out of the sidewalk line item in the capital, you know, leaving you somewhere just under 100,000 in that account. And Chairperson Moranti's correct. We did talk about taking 5,000 from the library and 10,000 from the municipal building maintenance account. I think we kind of, not got confused, but just, I think we made a little bit of a mistake there. I don't think the library can, that was more than what I was willing to take now that we've had a chance to go back and look at it. But back to the original 100,000, I would take it out of the sidewalk construction aggregate account.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
Hi, Rosemary again. I was Mary Moranti. On the sidewalks, you know, I definitely want to keep something in there. I think those of us who did a lot of walking around town in the fall knows, know the need and it does need to start being addressed. Now, one good thing is that I understand the, from my notes also, that the consulting and engineering costs are already being covered so that we would be ready to go with the actual work of the sidewalk project, which is good. One thing I did ask Robert about earlier, in terms of that system that would be used to determine the specific needs and where the sidewalks are, the different locations, we would have some data on where the problems are. And in addition to doing the major repairs, if there's something other existing that we think is potentially a dangerous situation, our buildings and grounds people or roadway people could at least do some patches, et cetera, in the interim. So we would have that data because it won't be anecdotal anymore. It will be systematic data on the condition of sidewalks.
This is Kathy speaking again. So Rosemary, are you supporting the reduction of 50,000? Or are you in the mind of taking 100,000 from the sidewalk?
I would like to definitely keep the 100,000 in. I would consider the reducing it by the other 50,000, knowing that at least we're going to have the data on where the issues are and if we have to do some temporary fixes in the interim, that'll make it safer for people. We'll be able to do that because of the data that the system will give us.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
Jesse Nazzo, I have thought about this a lot. If the true goal is to get to zero, and as I said the other night, I thought we could sustain above zero. But if we were going to go that way, I would say take 100,000 from sidewalks, combined with the Board of Ed and what they've contributed. I mean, I think they went above and beyond. The other night, we were talking about a 50-50 split between the Board of Ed and the town and they came in at 291,150. So I would say we should take 100,000 from sidewalks. And, you know, I know we need sidewalks, but as everyone's mentioned, these are strange times and we've got to do what we can. So if the true goal is to get to zero, that would be my proposal.
Thank you. Anybody else have any thoughts regarding the additional monies for the reduction to get to where we?
Madam Chair?
Mr. Kopp?
Um, I would like to add to Councilman Nazzo's point that, you know, Steve LaPage and his team did a fantastic job at, you know, finding some money there that we could expend this year with the realized savings and create ourselves with a little easier of a situation on the town level. And I would be okay with taking 100,000 from the sidewalks to get us to the zero-mill increase while still having some money in that fund to get the ball rolling.
Thank you. Have I heard from everybody?
Madam Chair?
Oh, go ahead, Dave.
Dave?
Dave, undo it here. I totally agree. I'd take 100,000 out of the sidewalk fund. I'd rather do that than to take any money from the police department at this point. So I agree with Todd. I think originally too, we had that set at 50,000. Robert, did you increase that to 200?
You're talking about the sidewalks for the current year, I think, has 50,000 in it. And yeah, we increased it to 200,000 for next year.
I totally agree. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Wazorko.
Yes, this is Christopher Wazorko. Two comments. We should thank the Board of Education, Steve, his staff, the Board of Ed. I imagine this wasn't something you wanted to do, but truly appreciate the efforts and you. something you wanted to do, but truly appreciate the efforts and you going the extra mile to kind of help us out here. The question I have is a little bit more generic in nature, but what, what, what recourse would we have? Say the Board of Ed didn't realize any unused funds from the COVID situation that, or didn't realize the savings that would cover the 204,000? What, what would we do in that situation? And that might be a question more, I don't know if the town manager wants to talk about it or any, you know, I think that's a question for anybody who has a comment.
Mr. Lee?
I'd like to have Steve respond to that. I think he felt pretty confident that that would be there. Why don't you, why don't you talk about the confidence you have with that? And then I'll, I'll talk about, you know, what we would do otherwise?
Sure. This is Steve LePage. So I just wanted to, I wanted to say that we were, we were really wrestling with what number we're comfortable with. And obviously, we don't want to end up coming up short and promising something that we can't deliver on. So, you know, based on what we see so far and the projections from Steve Bussel with energy, with our staffing, we don't have any overtime happening right now. That saves quite a bit. We don't have our daily subs. We did have to recall our building subs who are like the daily, who are there every single day as a permanent solution to, you know, staff outages. So that, that was a reduction to the, you know, when we originally thought maybe 400,000. Some things reduced that number quite a bit. That was one of them. But I, so I guess to, to say, based on, you know, Sam's projection, kind of looking at it very carefully, talking with Steve about the energy savings, about some supply, supply line decreases, maintenance and supply. And it was a pretty careful, careful look at what we felt comfortable with. So I'm, I'm, I'm pretty optimistic that we'll, that we'll be okay with that number. But I do appreciate the, I appreciate the, the comments from the town council members and also the care that we make sure we don't come up short on that because it's very important that we get our, our technology replacement.
However, however, Christopher and the council members, if, if, you know, if for some reason that didn't come to fruition, I believe on the general government side, we will not, you know, looking at projecting out to the end of the year, we still have to cover the police overtime. And I'm not sure that the savings in all of the other accounts will make up for the, what we project for the shortfall in, in police overtime. There may be some transfers that could be done. But, you know, so we may have to go through an additional appropriation just to cover the, you know, the overage in the general fund. Sometimes we ask you for an additional appropriation for 200,000. Let's say, let's say the overage is going to be 200,000. Sometimes we'll ask for an additional appropriation of 200,000 instead of asking you to approve 25 transfers that add up to 200,000. So the net impact, that you really don't, you really don't use the fund balance, but you know, it, you know, net wise.
Yeah, yeah.
So I'm not sure that there's going to be funds in the, in the, in the, in the general, you know, town budget side to cover, you know, the, any shortfall, you know, as far as pre-purchasing in the current fiscal year. I, I think if we got to that point, we would probably go back into next year's CIP and perhaps, you know, try to find a project or two that could be put off to make up that difference as opposed to doing an additional appropriation to cover the shortfall this year.
Okay.
As far as the CIP is concerned.
Thank you for those comments. Just a general observation, the governor has now said that schools will not be going back to, back in session no earlier than May 20th. So this again is another changing scenario, which may support these savings that the superintendent of schools has put forward. So I'm, I'm feeling a little more confident that using these funds, even though we had projected at one point a $400,000 unrealized savings, we are looking at a contribution of 291,000. So there is still some, some more dollars in there in case anything should happen. I think that would help the Board of Education at least stay with the plan for now and that we can be confident it will work out in the end.
Madam Chair, can I interject something? It's Becky Tyrell. Kathy, can I interject something?
Yes, please go ahead.
Just, I wanted to express the fact that, you know, several of the board members are concerned about the proposal as well as, as well as a couple of the council members mentioned. However, we do trust in the fact that, you know, the, the superintendent as well as his staff have been really careful in determining what we think we can, what we think we can do with the projected savings. I will say that the original amount that was stated, 400,000, was in a different time, even though it was only a few days ago. Because after that, the governor, you know, proposed, made another proposal which required us to keep employed all of our staff as well as some of the vendors which we were working with. So everything is a constant state of change, we all know. And this is the best case scenario for, for, for all of us. And, you know, we really did try and go above and beyond what we were requested to do just because we know that we want to make sure we keep our operating budget intact. And we're really trying to do the right thing by the town while still making sure we're protecting the education system.
Thank you for that. I, Becky, I appreciate your thoughts. Certainly, it's a, it's an ongoing concern of everybody where things are going to fall out next year in terms of what revenues we can expect from the state, what additional expenses we may know nothing of at this point in time. So I believe with the, the research that's been done by the town staff along with the superintendent and the Board of Education, I think this is a, this is a plan that can work. As of course, if anything changes, we will certainly have to take action at that time. But at this point in time, with all the information we have, we certainly have to make a decision. So I am at this point asking the town manager if there is agreement in all these changes with our capital plan going forward. We still have to approve the Board of Education operating budget. That's still on, that's still been not approved. Is that right? Along with our capital?
That's correct. Those of, you have two, I, I believe you'd have two motions on the capital. The total project, you know, the total amount in the capital budget plus the contribution from the general fund and, and the Board of Education budget as well. Unless you want to make, you know, some, you know, I know it was brought up earlier about making some minor changes to the, to the contribution to the library and the, and maybe taking a little bit more out of the general services budget for electricity. I don't know if you want to make those changes as well or just stand pat on those and, and, and just make what's in front of you as far as the CIP is concerned. That would net, that would net us, you know, $5,000 lower, you know, on the CIP budget. We can, we can do the calculations in a couple of minutes. We'll let you know what that would be if you, if you like.
I would like to see that if you could put together those numbers that we need. So we'd have to prove our capital, as you said, contribution to the general fund and then the Board of Education operating fund, which has not been changed. So we will use that original number that was given to us. If you could provide that.
Yeah, I'm not sure it'd be the original number. It'd be the, it'd be the updated number based upon the $83,000. It would be the number we gave you the other evening after the last meeting.
Okay. Is everybody in agreement with that, that approach to where we are going right now?
Yes, Madam, Madam Chair?
Yes?
Deborah Tompkins. I'm, I'm thinking too, I know that we, we made a slight error with the 10,000 rather than 5,000 for the library electricity. But I think since the library has been shut down and, and they're going to be continuing to be shut down, they may have realized even more of a surplus with the electricity than, than the 5,000. So maybe that 10,000 would be more in line and we should be okay with that.
Okay, thank you for that.
Madam Chair? Yeah, Madam Chair? This is Christopher Wazorko. I would rather take a little different. I would, I would like to actually add 5,000 back into the library fund. And I would like to go to the municipal building maintenance account and make a reduction of 10,000 in that account. And like the town manager said, that would net us another reduction of $5,000 overall. But you know, in my notes, I thought the library could absorb $5,000 next year. And, and, you know, the municipal building maintenance fund, I thought we could take 10,000 out of that account.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
Yes, Rosemary Moranti. I would agree with Councilman Wazorko. It's still going to be a net reduction of $5,000 for, you know, building electricity. So we're still making a, an overall reduction.
Okay. Is there agreement on making those adjustments at this time? We'll have to go back in and redo those final numbers for approval. And Robert, with your help and Rob's, hopefully we can get that done so that everything works out the way it should.
Yeah, if you'd like, I could, you know, if you just give us a couple of minutes, Rob can run through the individual departments that have to be adjusted, give you the final, you know, final numbers and, and then be ready to run you through the, the motions that are necessary. I would like to point out that one of the things that I do like about, you know, first off, I, I don't like, you know, having to reduce the, the contribution to capital projects. You know, number. But I, I think, you know, given, you know, the circumstances and the council's desire to get to a zero mill increase, I think it's the best way to do it because next year, it at least gives us a laser focus on, on capital. You know, if you take a little bit out of the Board of Education's operating, you take a little bit out of capital, it gets confusing as to, you know, at least next year, you know, trying to follow the, the path of, 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 you know, what was reduced just to, you know, to get to zero. So I, I think doing it this way allows us to say, hey, this is where we have to build back up the capital and not necessarily in the Board of Education's budget or artificially in the general, general fund budget too. So I think, I think it's a good plan, you know. But it, it also points out that, you know, going forward, using more one-time monies, i.e. if we have some additional unassigned fund balance, you know, it should be focused going towards the, the capital budget.
Okay, I think that's true.
Madam Chair?
Yeah, just a moment, please. I, I appreciate that. And regarding some of our fund balance, I, I am a little bit wary of using a million dollars right now out of our fund balance to accomplish this. However, it's my understanding we're expecting some tax payments, which hopefully will be coming in before the end of this fiscal year, which be a replacement of some of those funds we're using right now. So that's, I, I do, I am a little bit concerned about taking a million dollars out of fund balance at this point. Mr. Wazorko?
Christopher Wazorko, just a comment. I don't know if it would be more appropriate to maybe take a 10-minute recess and let Rob Butein go through the numbers. I'm not sure if we take a couple of minutes, that that's enough time. But, you know, I, I don't know if you want me to make a motion to take a 10-minute recess and everybody should be back at their computers by 7:22.
Rob, will that give you enough time to put your information together for us?
Well, I, this is Rob Butein. I just want to make sure what you're actually discussing here. Because Kevin, can you give me access to my computer screen? Once I have access, thank you. Because I want to just say, and I'm sure you're not looking at my face now, which is probably a benefit to you all. But within the library budget, the, you're, you're essentially requesting that we add $5,000 back to the electricity line, correct?
The town's contribution.
Okay. To increase the town's contribution to fund the library would have to increase an expenditure by the same amount. Because right now the balance, the budget balances, or, I mean, the reduction of $10,000 occurred in the electric, electricity line item. Okay, you then reduce the contribution the town makes to offset that. If you want to reduce or increase the electricity line item by 5,000 versus reduce, you know, 5,000 more. So in essence, you would have a $5,000 reduction to the line item versus the 10 that currently sits there. You would have to increase the line item by $5,000. Then reduce or change the general fund contribution to again, make the balanced budget.
Right, right.
Okay. So that's what I, that's what I'm asking. We would have to increase the electricity line item by $5,000, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And then offset that increase with an increase in the general fund contribution as well. Okay.
Yeah, that's my, that's what I was going for.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay. And then further, you would like the building maintenance town site, Department 315, electricity reduced by 10,000.
Yes.
Okay. All right, yeah. So if you give me, yeah, five, 10 minutes, I'll have it all done.
Okay, and then we just have the adjustment to our capital as well. You'll take care of all that.
Right. So the capital, at this point, based on what was presented tonight, the general fund contribution would go down to 308,318. Is that correct?
No, I think, I think it'd be another $5,000 less than that.
Okay.
Because you're going to get
Less than that. Where would that 5,000 come from?
The 5,000 savings in the, in the, in the operating budget that you're going to see, you're going to increase by five, decrease by 10. So that's going to give you $5,000 available.
Okay, to net out to, to net out to zero. Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. All right. Give me five minutes. We'll get it done.
It'll be like 303 would be the contribution to, 303, 318, I think would be the contribution to the CIP.
Yes, correct. Okay. Give me a couple of minutes.
Thank you. Okay, we'll just all take a little break and resume. We'll come back and it is now 7:18, 7:25?
Okay.
All right. See you back then.
Rob, I'm available if you, if you need to talk to me about anything, so.
Okay, I'm here. I'm just putting all the numbers in, so. Okay, I'm here. I'm just putting all the numbers in, so. Robert, can you hear me?
Yes.
Kevin, can I have my screen back? Thank you. I'm coming up with zero in total, but I'm showing capital at 313, 318.
You're adding.
I reduced the town, Department 315, by 10 grand. The library increased by 5,000, electricity. The contribution out through the library increased 5,000. So that's an increase of $5,000 out of the town side in total.
It should be a decrease of $5,000.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I said that wrong, a decrease of $5,000, correct?
So that should bring the 391 down to 386.
It's, I'm. Okay, does this include the $100,000 from the sidewalk?
Yes.
Okay. Let me just.
Well, on my slide, the last slide, that includes 100,005.62, I think, coming out. Then that's like, say where, if you know what I'm saying.
Yeah, no, no, I know, I'm just, I'm just trying to pick a number here, so. There's a little, there's, if they take an exact 100,000 out of the sidewalks, plus what came out of the Board of Ed, they're essentially reducing capital by 391, 150.
Right, right, and then if you subtract the 5,000 out of the, that's coming out of the general fund, that should bring that, you know. You have to make, yeah, it wouldn't be 30, it wouldn't be $5,000 off the 308, you know, 18, it'd be several hundred dollar difference there.
Right, so, so that's what I'm saying, so capital in total would be 1,5850, I'm sorry, 1,500, 508,850, funded with $1 million of general fund allocation, 200,000 debt management.
Yep.
And 308,850.
Yep.
From the general.
No, it should be less than that, it should be 308,850 minus $5,000.
There you go.
Well, we don't need all that savings, I guess. We don't need to take the, instead of taking $100,000 out of the, out of the, out of the.
We can take.
Out of the sidewalks, take 95 out of the sidewalks.
Yeah.
Okay, you don't have to take 100 grand out anymore because we're getting $5,000 more, so make the sidewalks 105 instead of 100. Okay, that should balance it off.
Yep, give me one minute. It's, it's going the other way, though. It's 313.
Okay.
So what, that, okay, that's in total, though, so it's 313, 850.
Right, 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 you can make a 330, yes, the contribution should increase, yes, you're right. It's, it should be going in that direction, not the other direction.
That's correct, yeah, okay, so it's 313, 850.
Yes.
It's 30338. Increase 3338, 332. So that's the total, right, so I got 1,087, 626, 250. 1.1. Yeah, minus 100, okay, 313. Okay, 313, 850. 62, 37, 26, 26, 36. Okay, I think we're good.
Hey, is everybody back? There's Dave. Were missing anyone?
We have all our council people back.
Okay, there's Steve, okay. Rob, do you want to go ahead and read off what we need to do and what adjustments to which departments we make? I'll ask for a motion a second and we'll vote on them, please.
Okay, okay, this is Rob Budin, so I'll start with the municipal, municipal building maintenance budget, Department 315. For what you just did, you reduced the electricity line item by $10,000. That makes the revised budget 1,411,200. It's a reduction of $24,200 from this year or 1.69%.
Okay, can I have a motion to approve Department 315 in the amount of $1,411,200?
Madam Chair.
So moved, Rosemary Moranti.
Second, Christopher Wazorko.
Thank you, I have a motion in a second. Any discussion on this motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay, the next budget is the town Department 840, which is interfund transfers out. So in total, this department is now $1,074,463. It's a reduction of $487,150 from this year's budget or 31.20%.
Okay, may I have a motion to approve Department 840 in the amount of $1,074,463, please?
Madam Chair, Deborah Tompkins, so moved.
Second, Justin Azel.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Okay, the, well, let me, let me just go to the capital budgets first because we just did the transfers out. The town capital expenditure budget, based on your changes tonight, would be $1,187,600.
May I have a motion to approve the town capital at $1,187,600, please?
Madam Chair, so moved, Deborah Tompkins.
Second, Justin Azel.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thanks, Rob.
The second, the Board of Ed capital budget would be, gross expenditures would be $326,250.
May I have a motion to approve the Board of Education capital in the amount of $326,250, please?
Madam Chair, Dave Underwood, so moved.
Second, Deborah Tompkins.
I have a motion in a second. Any comments on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 And the final department budget will be the library fund 8100. The new bottom line is $750,142, an increase of $16,895 or 2.3% from this year's budget.
Okay, may I have a motion to approve 8100 library in the amount of $750,142?
Madam Chair, I've, so moved, Rosemary Moranti.
Second, Justin Azel.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you so much. Next, Rob.
Okay, the next one would be the Board of Ed budget in total. That number is $39,144,267, an increase of $915,162 or 2.39% from this year's budget.
May I have a motion to approve the Board of Education operating budget in the amount of $39,144,267, please?
Madam Chair, so moved, Deborah Tompkins.
Madam Chair, second, Dave Underwood.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion on that motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, all those motions carried. Is there anything else, Rob, that we have to do?
Yes, we have to, we have to approve the general government budget in total. So the, the general fund government budget in total is $23,354,931. That is a reduction of $196,786 or 0.84% from this year's current budget.
Thank you, may I have a motion to approve the general government total budget in the amount of $23,354,931?
Madam Chair, so moved, Deborah Tompkins.
Have a second?
Second.
Madam Chair, Dave Underwood, second.
Got a few.
Or Dave Underwood, I didn't take that.
Thank you, Chris. Second that.
Good job, I have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion on that motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
So just to give you a total, a total town budget, we're at $62,499, $62,499,198. An increase from this year's budget of $718,376 or 1.16%. Based on the current revenues that we have projected thus far, that would equate to a zero mill rate increase.
Thank you, Rob. At this point, Robert, I defer to you. Is it necessary to vote on the mill rate at this point? Or is that something we're going to hold off on after we have a public hearing?
Yes, you would set the mill rate after the public hearing. You may decide to make some further adjustments to your budget after the public hearing, depending on public comment and perhaps changes that happen between now and then. So after the public hearing, you will make a final vote on the expenditure side of the budget, whether to change it at all, and then you'll, and then you would set the mill rate.
Okay, thank you for that.
What?
Do we know how we're going to do the public hearing yet?
Well, now that we have these numbers, what I'd like to do is, is plan it. You'll plan the public hearing. What I would like to see if we can do is to actually allow for public comment live while we're, while we're at, while we're, you know, at the public hearing. We, people could send us emails ahead of time, but, but actually allow for people to give us live comments on the May 4th, if that's, if that's acceptable to the council.
I would agree, that's a good way to go with it.
You know, maybe we, we allow people to call in and then we can open up the phones to, you know, people individually and say, do you want to make any comments about the budget and give them, you know, an opportunity to make comments.
That sounds like something that should work. And we're going, did, did we have the date set, Robert, for that? Was that in May, May 9th or something there, therein?
It was, I think it was the 4th, May 4th, which is the, which is the council meeting night. We could make it a separate, a separate day from the council meeting if you choose, but we, we did make it May 4th.
I think keeping it May 4th is fine, getting everybody together to do all these video conferences is, it seems to be working out. I think that would make sense. We've always done the public hearings, generally speaking, around the time we had a council meeting. So I, I would be okay having it on that night. I asked my colleagues if they're okay with that as well.
I agree.
Yes.
Okay, we'll go ahead and do it on that date, then.
So we'll work with Kevin Ross and the IT department to set up a meeting where we will be on Zoom, but we will also allow people to call in and, and, you know, you know, perhaps Kevin can control, you know, allowing people to speak one at a time.
Yeah, that shouldn't be a problem. We can, I would just unmute them and work our way through the available people. Just to realize we only can do 100 participants. Right now, we have 16 in here, so that would leave, you know, about 84 people that could call in. I don't know if that's a problem. I don't think we've had, we've had that many, but if we did, people would have to leave the meeting to be able to make public comment.
I, I think we're in, in good shape with that, Kevin. I don't recall us ever, well, there have been times where there were a lot, but I, I think with what we're trying to do, we should be okay with that.
And we will encourage people, if they want to provide public comment, they can do it by email as well in advance of the meeting. And if it looks like we have a lot of, Kevin should be able to tell us that we have 84 people online and that no more can join, and then as people make their comments, we can ask them to hang up. You know, they will still be able to watch it on, on YouTube, you know, you know, so they'll be able to see what's going on and hear what's going on, but there's no reason for them to, to stay on the phone at that point in time necessarily. So that might loosen it up, but for some reason, we do end up with more than 84 people on that evening.
Okay, any other input from the council before we close the work session?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I, I don't know if I missed it, but did we actually vote on the total budget?
We did.
The sixth, we did. Boy, I missed that one. Did I say?
I, I think it did say aye.
I don't know why I missed that. I'm telling you, being this part-time, being a part-time teacher is having an effect on me, I'll tell you.
Imagine if you had to do it full-time.
I cannot.
Hard work.
Gives me a headache.
I just wanted to thank the council for your approval of the Board of Ed budget tonight and for your cooperation. Thank you very much.
I would also, like to thank Board of Education Superintendent Sam, along with Robert Lee and Rob Budin. This isn't easy trying to get all these numbers. We've made a number of changes and assumptions, but I, I believe we have something to offer the town of Plainville that will keep us in good shape for the upcoming year despite everything else that's going on in the world. So personally, thank you to everybody for all that you've done to get us to this point.
You're welcome, and we will get the updates to the council members and the board, and to Steve, and get it up on the, our webpage, probably with, probably won't be till Monday, you know, Good Friday's tomorrow, so it'll probably be first thing on Monday. and get it up on the, our webpage, probably with, probably won't be till Monday, you know, Good Friday's tomorrow, so it'll probably be first thing on Monday.
Okay, that sounds great, unless there's anything else anybody would want to add, I would ask for a motion to adjourn from the work session.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
It's Jesse Nazo, I just wanted to say before we adjourn, when this process started, and especially once we, that last meeting we had right before we went into this stay-at-home order, I never thought we could get to a zero, and I'd really like to give a lot of credit to Steve LaPage, his staff, and the Board of Education for stepping up and taking a lot of that on, they went above and beyond to make some reductions to their capital project, I know, I listened to the Board of Ed meeting earlier tonight, I know all the members that were in, on that meeting were not in agreement. I know it's, it might be unpalatable for some of you, but we do appreciate it on the town side. And you've proven me wrong, I didn't think we could get here, but we did, so thank you everyone for all the hard work.
Madam Chair? Anybody else?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Rosemary Moranti, I also want to thank, you know, Tom Manager Lee and his staff, and Superintendent LaPage, his staff, and the Board of Education for all their work in making this possible, you know, we began this process living in one world, and we're now at this point living in a very different world. And certainly my priority, as I said the other night, wasn't necessarily a specific number, but certainly my priority was making sure we maintain solid, well-functioning town services and a strong school system. And I think we've done this with this budget. And I hope that we will, I hope and I think we will have support from the community. Thank you.
Madam Chair? Yep, Madam Chair, I'd like to wish everyone a happy Easter.
Happy Easter.
Thank you for that, happy Easter.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, Jesse Nazo.
I have a motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say well, everybody.
Take care, thank you.
Take care, everyone.
Have a good weekend.
Thank you, Kevin.
No problem, thank you.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you, Kevin, very definitely.